All right, we are good to go. It is Monday, October 24, 7:30, and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Here.
Stunek?
Here.
Terry?
Yep.
Stingline?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Chesak?
Here.
Bevins?
Here.
Bedeau?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, law, nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number four, we are looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Stunek, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item five is consent calendar. Notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by a roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second? Second by O'Day, any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, the consent calendar is adopted. Item six is council committee reports, item six A is personal and finance committee. I'll turn it over to Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have ten, ten items tonight, first of which is resignation, and the motion is to accept Mr. Drew Belton's resignation effective October 18th, 2024, and further to authorize staff to begin the hiring process to backfill one of the community service officer positions.
And I- So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, well.
Second, all right, move.
You guys okay?
Got it.
Okay.
Got to re- reargue.
I have no idea who made the motion. I'm gonna call it Stunek made the motion and Johnson seconded.
Got to change things up.
That's what I heard. Any discussion on the resignation? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, that motion carries, please proceed.
Next up is an update regarding arbitration with the IBW Public Utilities Union, and I pass it over to Chris to give a brief update.
So we have selected an arbitrator for our arbitration hearing with the Public Utilities Union. The arbitrator will be Patrick Kelly. We did find some information about him on the BMS website as far as his bio, and then as far as the date of the arbitration, we were tentatively scheduled for December 18th. I don't believe it's totally finalized yet, I haven't heard that from the attorney, but that is the date that we are looking at at this point.
Thank you, any questions from our HR on the arbitration?
I'm always concerned a person with two first names.
Thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Chair, oh, do you have something else?
Just that I have two first names.
Oh. Not the same.
Well, I think, reel it in, Kelly.
Yeah, I think we've heard enough. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. Third item is to approve an MOA for new public utilities positions, and the motion is to approve an MOA between the city of Brainerd and IBW Local Number 31 Public Utilities Union, establishing the wages for the business office support specialist, facilities custodian, and journeyman electrician positions, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry, any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
These are the positions we've been trying to be hire- trying to hire for over a year, dating back to maybe May or June of last year on one of them, and we haven't been able to get the union to agree to an MOA. We finally got there, we have an MOA, we are gonna post these three positions.
And an MOA is, for those watching on-
A memorandum of agreement on the position descriptions, or I don't know about descriptions, but the wages.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, that motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, next up is a new line worker, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Josh Gravel for a line worker position, further that Josh be placed on step four of the 2023 line waiter- line worker wage grid, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek, any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
We are fully staffed on in the line worker position now, so we're excited to be there.
Excellent news, thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, that motion carries, please proceed.
Okay, next up is another hiring, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Michael Habighorst as our public works director at step three with a November 1, 2024 start date, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Terry, any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
So I, staff went through the hiring process, and I'm aware that there was another candidate that some people know and like, who wasn't recommended, but like I've long said, the city council has one employee, and that's the city administrator. When the city administrator goes and interviews a department head, I'm gonna put my trust in his decision on who he thinks he can best work with, so I'm gonna support this motion to ratify hiring Mike Habighorst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, any further discussion? Chairman O'Day?
Yeah, this is, this is a tough one, you know, but I'm sure that this candidate is a very high-quality candidate, but this is the first time we've done this type of hiring for a department head without any other committee members involved. This has gone through staff, and now what we have to go on is just a short memo that just tells us this is who they picked. I got a little more information from our administrator before the meeting, which makes me feel a little bit better. Whoever ends up in this position, I'm gonna do my best to work with them, but it is a little tough for me to decide when we, when we know we have somebody who applied that has zero learning curve, who does the job at a very high level. It's, it's very hard for me to go with this decision where we're going to be training somebody in at one of our most important positions in the city. So I'm, I'm on the fence, I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
We're gonna find out.
Any further discussion? Chief Stunek?
I'm gonna vote against this, and the reason is, everybody knows my history, and I always like to promote from within or local people, especially when you have a local candidate who's worked for the city, understands everything, he could move right in with his boots moving and make things work. I don't know the other candidate from all, other than like you said, Mike, a memorandum or whatever, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no against this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll go with Stingline, then Chesak.
I, um, I, I agree with Councilman Stunek and, and O'Day. I, I, while I support our city administrator, and I, I want to have, and I, I really do have great faith in, in his, his choices and decision-making, I, I want to know more than we've got here for something like this, and given what admittedly is not in our packet that I have heard, I, I want more. And so I will also be voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak.
Uh, I got a question or two. This position is like the third or fourth highest in the city, or somewhere around there, is that correct? Based on our hierarchy?
I don't know the grades. Chris, do you know what the grades are? I don't know where he, this position ranks with the grades.
Nobody can answer that, Jeff.
Okay, well, it's, it's somewhere, it's a-
It's high up.
Yeah, okay, and then, um, I feel the same way, we're asked to make a, it's an important decision, and I, I certainly trust our staff to come back with good recommendations. I, um, I, I, I don't see a, a resume, I don't see a comparable to the other candidates. I, I think it would behoove us to just not have any kind of background at all. I don't know the work history of this person, and again, I, I want to trust our staff, I do, but sometimes, I think in, in many of the same comments I'm hearing is, on this one, I'd like to have a little more. I, I, I don't know what the other options are, and so before I can move forward with this, I'd at least like to see comparable resumes, what was, you know, of course, we don't have a discussion or interview to do, but we could at least see where the work history is and that type of thing, and I would be prepared to make a motion to that effect if this does not go through tonight, that we come back with more information.
Thank you, any further discussion? Chair Terry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I'm curious if other council members are concerned about where this is at in the process, why we didn't get involved earlier, because we're at a point of offering the position now, and this puts staff in kind of an awkward position to want to offer the position and, and us questioning their decision. I agree with Councilmember Johnson that ideally we would want to build staff from within and hire the staff person. This time around, it makes sense to those that were on the hiring committee that we hire this individual, and I support the staff's decision to do so. Is it ideal? Certainly not. If I had questions, though, I would've gotten involved earlier on in the process.
Thank you. Let's see, I think, I think everybody's, every, everybody's, Mr. Mayor?
I'll take a stab at it as well. I'm gonna echo the sentiments about the process itself, and I, no process is perfect, but in, in making a decision like this, I've always said that our, our job as council members are to represent the people. We can't do that without having the information in front of us, and so even though we trust our staff, and even though we present things forward from the staff and like to accept their recommendations, without any full information on it, it's really tough to make that decision and then look out into the public and say, we made the decision based off of the information that we had. So I, knowing a little bit about the candidates, I think we have an opportunity to hit the ground running right now. I think we have an opportunity to set ourselves in motion and start moving forward on some projects that we wanna do instead of constantly shuffling our staff around. I'd like to see us as a city start moving forward and getting things done that the public are looking for us to do, and spend less of our time constantly shuffling and looking for new individuals because we don't know if we have the right fit. We've got a perfect opportunity to put somebody in place that we know is a good fit, that we've promoted twice on the time that I've been on the council, and specifically for this exact position. I would prefer that the city puts themselves in a position where we are moving forward rather than hoping that we have the right candidate and, and moving in a direction that we aren't quite 100% sure on.
Thank you. Well, I'll go last. I, I'm, I'm gonna support the motion, and here's why. If you didn't like the process, waiting until we offered the job probably, probably isn't the best choice. And if you don't like the process, I'm, I'm up to that. Next time, let's change the process. But we told our administrator, pick a guy, and let us know, and now we're gonna say no? What's gonna happen the next time he picks a guy? Well, no. If you like one of the other candidates better, you know more than I do, 'cause I wasn't in on the interviews. I didn't get to see everybody's resume. As a matter of fact, now that's gonna change if we vote this down, because all of that is likely gonna become public, and I don't like that either. If this is what we asked our city administrator to do, and now you tell him, well, that's great, but you didn't pick our guy, why weren't you, why didn't you say that when we told him to pick a guy? Why didn't you say that? Why didn't you say, I wanna be part of the hiring committee? And I have no problem with that, but under the circumstances, I think the change now is probably going to really slow the process down, to quote the mayor. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with it, I'm gonna put the faith in our city administrator and support the motion. Everybody's had a chance to talk once, I'm going to call for a roll call. Tony? Mr. Bevins? I'm gonna ignore you unless somebody says-
Mr. Bevins, I'll challenge that. I have one piece of information regarding what you just said.
Let's see if there's a second to the challenge.
Second.
All right, we have a challenge to that. Let's talk about the challenge.
Yes, I have a piece of information here to reflect-
Wait, 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 we're gonna vote on the challenge. We're talking about the challenge, Mr. Chesak. So the, Mr. Chesak has challenged my, everybody's gotten to speak once, including him, and Mr. O'Day agrees with that challenge. So if you think Mr. Chesak should be able to speak a second time, and, and rest assured, I will let everybody speak a second time if you think that Mr. Chesak should speak a second time. Mr. Chesak's had a chance to speak? Please speak only to the challenge and not to the motion, if you'd like to speak. Mr. O'Day, you-
Sure. Yeah, I seconded it because I think any council member that wants to speak before we've made a decision should be allowed that-
As he was.
And if it, if they have something come up during that discussion, that's what a discussion is, he has more to say. I don't have a problem with anybody saying whatever they wanna say in here, that's what we're here for. He's representing 14,000 people, so I think he has a big voice, and if he has a point to make, make it.
Fair enough. Anybody else wish to speak to the challenge?
Yes.
Mr. Chesak?
Yes, I have a piece of information reflecting on something you just said, and it applies, and I wanna show you that, I wanna share that with you, it's very brief.
Fair enough.
And that's all I wanna say.
Okay, anybody else wishes to speak to the challenge? Tony, please call the roll, and if you vote in favor, you're voting in favor of the challenge, in which case we'll, we'll reopen the floor to additional discussion.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
No.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Nope, and that challenge is upheld. Mr. Chesak, you have a floor. Yes, I have an email here from October 6th, which was prior to our last council meeting, I do believe, and it says, very short, "Hi, Chris, please let me know how many applicants, how many qualified, and how many are being interviewed." From your recent memo, it says, "Current job opportunities, public works director, scheduled for October 3rd. Interviews scheduled for October 3rd. Thank you, Jeff." So I asked, just to your point, I asked about this prior to the recommendation being made tonight, and I got nothing. I got no response, it was a copy to Mr. Roy's. So yeah, I agree with you, we should get part of it, we should be a part of it if we wanna, if we wanna do something more than just shut it down when it gets here before us, but we also have a responsibility. And I asked, Mr. Bevins, that's here, I can share with you right now if you'd like. I ain't making this up.
It's on the screen.
I don't know how to do that. You want me to send it to you? Here it comes.
No, it's on the screen, I read it.
Okay, well, there you go.
Yeah, but that's-
I mean, I'm trying to find out more.
All right.
October's-
My, my point is, Jeff, you asked how many people, how many candidates?
I sent it to Chris and Nick.
Yeah, my point is, you weren't part, you didn't ask to be part of the interview process.
But I'm trying to find out more.
I understand.
I mean, if that doesn't qualify for what you're saying, I, I'm sorry, I disagree.
I understand. Okay, we're on the discussion of the motion. The motion is to uphold the hiring of candidates chosen by our administrator. Anybody else wish to discuss that, who, anybody else? I'll ask a final time, and we'll ask Tony to call the roll. I'm gonna remind you, if you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the motion and hiring, um, Michael Habighorst. Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
No.
Stunek?
No.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
No.
Johnson?
Yep.
Chesak?
No.
Bevins?
Yes, and that motion is defeated. Mr. Chair, Johnson, anything else?
Mr. President, if you wanna open it up for another motion, that's on you, or do you wanna just keep moving on?
So I don't know what else.
Keep moving on?
Yeah.
I have a motion.
Oh, okay.
It's up to you.
Yeah, no, I'll accept that.
I wanted to come back with more information, like some background information on the, on the people that were interviewed, and I would ask the attorney for a question here. Is this public data already, Mr. Attorney? Based on there being an interview? I believe it is.
Member Chesak in council, so under the Data Practices Act, applicant data such as if they're finalists, if they're interviewed, if that's what we're talking about here, yes, there's a number of things that are public, job history, education, training, work availability, that's all public data under the Data Practices Act. So a lot of it's on a resume, not necessarily all of it, but a lot of it.
Private data is not public, that's addresses, phone numbers, such like that, but I made that point so we understand what we can have, you can have it right now if you remember the public and want that, that's why you made it, you didn't want it made public. It can be made public, it is public. So I'd like to come back with the applicant's information, whatever was provided, scoring of the applicants by the group that interviewed, all the relative data to what we're looking for, ISO move.
Second.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chesak?
Absolutely.
To what, to what end are you suggesting we become the hiring committee?
I'm not suggesting that at all, I'm focusing on this one particular position, Mr. Bevins.
Yes, we, you, no, 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 I understand that, but, but just, so I understand, with the, with the purpose of us picking another candidate, why, why would we want all this data, when we've already told our administrator to make a recommendation?
Because he's asking us for a recommendation, Mr. Bevins, he asked me, and, and I, I'm not so sure, I appreciate, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not so sure I agree with the recommendation, so I want more information.
Got it.
And, and if we have to choose from the information we get, then we can do that, 'cause we're the city council. That's very simple.
That's what I wanted to know.
That's good.
With the understanding that we will make our own recommendation.
Thank you.
So we have a motion by Chesak, a second by Stingline, that we get all the information and make the recommendation. Any further discussion? Okay, let's, let's call the roll on this one, Tony.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Sure.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Nope, that motion passes. Anybody else like to try a motion on this item? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, we will move along.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully this one's a little quicker, but it's another hiring in the public works department, and it's actually informative because at committee we agreed to ratify the hiring, but in the meantime, she has rescinded her acceptance of the job offer. She found a better job already, so we're gonna wait until we have a public works director, if and when that ever happens, and then we'll hire the administrative specialist at that time. Number- Thank you. Number seven is approve new administrative assistant job description, and the motion is to approve the new administrative assistant job description and to authorize staff to negotiate the wage for the new position with IBW Local Number 31 Administrative Support Union, and ISO move.
We have a motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stunek, any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Adds a little bit more responsibility onto this specific position, and it will increase pay approximately $170 a month in, in benefits and salary, but it's, it's, it's a competent employee who we have in place there right now who we think could do a really good job with it.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Next up was our discussion on franchise fees, and the motion was to continue forward with exploration of the franchise fee model for funding through public engagement such as scheduling informational meetings and input sessions, putting out an online survey, and other possible avenues as they may come up, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Terry, Chairman Johnson?
We didn't, like, put the kibosh on the franchise fees, but we did say, okay, let's take a small step forward, let's get public engagement. We, we've heard from some people, I mean, the chair of the, the president of the chamber is here, we've heard that there's a lot of questions in the business community, I think we should let the entire community, the business community, the residents, all bring their questions, concern to us, so we have that information before we take any other steps forward. So the, the continue forward is just the one step of let's get some public engagement and let's hear what people want, because ultimately, on its face, I generally, I, on its face, I oppose franchise fees pretty much all the time, but I, I'm willing to let staff explore this and see how it, it might be beneficial for the community, but we'll see, but we wanna hear public engagement.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Next up is some insurance coverage change, and the motion is to direct staff to work with the insurance agents to add rapid flashing beacon signs as insured for our March 20, March 1, 2025 renewal, and ISO move.
We have a motion by Johnson?
Second.
Second by Stunek, Chairman Johnson?
So we recently had damage to one of our RFBs, and it was a $7,935 cost to repair. The driver was uninsured, so that cost all fell back onto us. If we added them to insurance, we would still be subject to a $5,000 deductible at each occurrence, so it'd save us $3,000, and it would come at the cost of $375 a year. And as we keep adding these, I think maybe we'll be replacing one every 10 years from traffic eye accidents, so the, the recommended motion is to add the coverage, but I'm pretty indifferent about it, to be honest.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Mr. Bevins? He already seconded it, that was my discussion.
Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, um, the damage to this one was $7,000 and change, the next one could be $15,000, I would assume. So it's, I mean, I, I think it behooves us to get the insurance.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Uh, Tiffany, Stingline?
Question, um, these things are very popular, and I'm wondering if, as we add more of them, our insurance cost is going to go up commensurate to that, or is this like, this'll cover 50 of them?
I don't know.
This covers nine, we have 19, this would cover the 19 we currently have.
Okay, so if we add more, our insurance rate, we'll be paying more for the insurance, okay.
Connie, do you have an answer to Tiffany's question?
It would be, the $375 is for $100,000 of property, so they would pay up to $100,000 on one claim.
Regardless of how many of these things we have.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't look like we need 100, you didn't tell us.
Any further discussion? I, I have a question, and I don't, I already asked it of Chairman Johnson, but I'd like to ask it of maybe Mr. Dean. I support the motion, by the way, but my question is, if somebody ran into my car without insurance, I might consider suing them. Have we done that to this particular violator? I mean, it's a state law to have, you have to have insurance.
That would be a better question for the police department. I know we filed the claim with the police department, they filed the report, and I know they, they were working with the city prosecutor on that matter. I don't know where that's in with the legal process.
Tony, any answers? Are we in the process of trying to recover some of our costs, being that this person was violating numerous laws?
To be quite frank, I don't know, um, I can-
Can you get an answer and have him come back?
Yeah, I can, I can certainly get that answer.
I mean, it would seem to me like we, we should do that.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, we would-
I don't know what the-
Ask for some restitution through the court, yeah.
So I, I, I presume this person isn't exempt from the state insurance laws?
No.
So, all right, thank you, anybody, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion which supports the insurance coverage, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, the final item on our agenda is funding to be budgeted for the 2025 council retreat, and the motion is authorize funds to be used from the council special projects line item in a 20, in 2025 for a council retreat, and select a day of the week for the retreat to be held, with no money being spent on food for council members, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Terry, any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
So the city administrator wants to hold a retreat to kinda talk about our organizational structure, our mission, vision, values, city facilities, and any strategic priorities we have over the, the medium term, and he wants to be able to put together some supplies and resources, and initially said food, but we weren't comfortable accepting taxpayer dollars for our food, so we're authorizing him to use that money from the council special projects budget to get what he needs in a reasonable manner for the retreat to be a success.
Thank you, any further discussion? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, you did not have me until the no food, so I want to-
You can bring your own food.
I understand that, I, as I probably will do, I'm a hefty guy.
Cookies. Giant cookies.
I'm a little concerned now that weed is legal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Chair?
Mr. President, part of that motion was to select a day of the week. Do we wanna do it on a Saturday, do we wanna do it on a Monday night, what do you, weekday or weekend?
Weekday.
We got one weekday.
What do you, are you thinking like a six, eight-hour thing here, like? Yeah, so it'd be a full day, like a vacation day. The retired guy says weekday.
And after Legion.
And after Legion.
Anybody other have a comment? Okay, then we will look for a weekday, this will be an entire day, and I imagine we'll do a doodle poll of some sort.
With fewer than 10 options.
With fewer than 10 options, all right. Mr. Chair, does that give you what you need?
Yes, sir, thank you, end of report.
Thank you very much, we'll move on to item 6B, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Michael O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President, we had five items on safety and public works tonight. First item was a discussion on sanitary sewer rates. A motion coming out of committee was to direct staff to come back, and I believe it's two meetings-
Yeah.
-with information regarding the need for how much rate increase we would need to meet our demands, along with when to add the main sewer project that we're, we'll speak of in, in the capital plan, and I feel like I'm forgetting something.
So.
And any, any other funding sources that are available to offset some of those needs, ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day.
Yeah, we have about 302,000 in our, is it Storm Sewer Fund?
Sanitary.
Sanitary Sewer Fund. We have some repairs that need to be made. One is underway right now, and there's another one that's about to be done. That's gonna, that's gonna cost us about roughly, just under $100,000. We have the money to do that this year. The 302,000 was budgeted to help with our sanitary sewer run, the main run that was supposed to cost that much. Now it's up to about 1.1 million. So we need to, we need to change some numbers, relook at the math, and decide when we can get this done. It's not imminent to be done right now, but it is an old pipe that needs to be repaired or replaced whenever we can. The sooner the better.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair. Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, this is kind of one of my things I've been working on as far as hoping we can take care of when the need is there. And if I'm not mistaken, our engineer, Jesse Dean, had indicated that this would have been a project moving forward with had the costs not come in so high. So there's, it was something we put off because of the high price, but we can't keep kicking the can down the road on these sanitary sewer projects. This is really close to the river. It's a very volatile place for environmental safety and that type of thing. The hazards exist, so we need to move on this, and I'll be supporting whatever we can get behind to get this done. And however the funding comes in through increasing our fees or bonding is an option that the sanitary collection sewer fees would pay for as we discussed in committee, so.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, then Mayor Bedeau.
Thank you. I support this motion, and ultimately, I agree with Jeff, that I support that rates need to go up. This is an enterprise fund. We obviously haven't done a perfect job of maintaining the system throughout the years because we're having so many collapses and problems that we've got to get on top of it, and we've got to get ahead of it on the maintenance and the replacement of these before they collapse and break down. So I look forward to see what staff comes back with.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Mine is more of a statement now, because I believe Jeff answered my question. Jeff, this appears to be some of the stuff you were talking about in one of our previous meetings, and I just wanted to thank you for bringing this stuff up, because this stuff is very important for us, getting a handle on what we're doing, when we're doing it, and why we're doing it. I just appreciate whenever we stand up and ask for more information and move down those directions, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next item was having to do with the Willow Street, South Forest Street Roundabout Project, and motion coming out of committee was to adopt the attached resolution affirming the no parking zones of South Forest Street and Willow Street within 260 feet of the intersection of Highway 371B, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stengline. Chairman O'Day?
Yeah, so this is more of a formality. There's already no parking in those areas. This is just something that MINDOT requires when we do a project like this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next item is authorization of an application for the National Scenic Byway Grant Program, and recommendation coming out of committee was to authorize for SRF to apply for the NSBP grant for the Trunk Highway 210 Lum Park Pedestrian Bridge Project on behalf of the city, conditional that the city be awarded sufficient IIJA technical assistance funding to cover the $9,954, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stengline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day?
I'm sure everybody knows all those acronyms and what they stand for, but this is, this is just another grant that we're gonna go after, specifically having to do with the Minnesota Great River Road and National Scenic Byways. Hopefully, we can get another $1 million towards the project, so it's not put on our taxpayers like we already discussed that we don't want to do and will not do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Our next item was a direction for the paradigm auto code violations. Motion coming out of committee was to direct staff to come back with information on a possible land swap with the landowner. Am I forgetting part of that motion?
Yeah, the, it was, the motion included, can he, coming back with staff, can he use crushed concrete and the calcium chloride to keep dust down if the staff would say that's appropriate?
Yes, more specific information on what he can use for a hardened surface. I so move.
And I think I included, is a fence gonna be, have to go through, I think it was, anyway.
Okay. Makes sense, right?
As long as James Kramfick has no questions, that's the staff. Right?
It was clear as mud during the meeting, too. Basically, we're asking for more information on what the options are for this individual. If you remember, I asked for this two weeks ago, but we're gonna do it now.
Now we're gonna do it. Excellent. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Chairman Johnson?
I have a question. If we're saying the business is out of compliance, are we putting on hold as part of this motion a pause on all fines and administrative fines and whatnot until we get this figured out as a body?
That's correct.
Okay, good.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Item number five was Brainerd Community Actions Request for Semi-Permanent Statues in the Right of Way. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend the approval of the request by Brainerd Community Action for the installation of semi-permanent statues in the downtown corridor right of way, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stengline. Any discussion? Chairman O'Day?
As you can see from the pictures, we have the idea to put giant Christmas cookies in downtown Brainerd as decorations. I thought they were gonna be there year-round. Unfortunately, they're just gonna be there during the holiday season. But still, a nice addition to our holiday decor and brought to you by Brainerd Community Action, at no cost to us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Chair? Report. Thank you very much. Item seven is unfinished business. 7A is call for applicants. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, before we do call for applicants, I do have one recommendation for the council. My recommendation for the Public Utilities Commission of one, Patrick Russo.
We have a recommendation.
Who to approve? Johnson?
Second. Mayor, we have a motion to approve by Johnson as our second. Second by O'Day. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Welcome back, Patrick. Mr. Mayor, please proceed.
Just when you thought he was out, we pull him back in.
The following commissions have board, or the following commissions and boards have positions available. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. Library Board, one term expiring 2025. Public Utilities Commission, one term expiring 2028. Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring, we did just fill that. I realized that halfway through, but thank you for bringing it up as I'm continuing. Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2026. We also have the Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as council president, I've got one position on the planning commission, one term to, I'm sorry, two positions, one term to expire in 2024. Well, that's a, that's an E, that's a three-month position.
Two.
Yeah, really. And one term to expire in 2026. Item 7B is the final reading of Prop. Ordnance 1576, an annexation of 15106 Riverside Drive. Mr. Kramfick, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to add from the last meeting, so with that, staff recommends conducting the final reading and to dispense with the actual reading of Prop. Ordnance 1576 and approve Prop. Ordnance 1576.
Thank you. Any questions of staff on what we're voting on this evening? Okay, hearing none. The first order of businesses, we're looking for a motion to conduct the final reading and dispense with the actual reading of Prop. Ordnance 1576, an ordinance providing for the annexation of 15106 Riverside Drive.
So moved.
Motion by Stengline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day. Any discussion? Okay, just a reminder, this must be unanimous, or we have to do the reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. The second order of business is to approve Prop. Ordnance 1576.
So moved.
Motion by Stengline?
Second.
Second by O'Day. Any discussion on Prop. Ordnance 1576? Hearing none? Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stengline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. Welcome to the city of Brainerd. Next up is item 7C, and, wait a minute. Yeah. An update on IT integration. Mr. Broyles?
Thank you, Mr. President. On October 7th, council asked staff to provide more information regarding the proposed IT integration between the city side IT and the public utilities IT. Predominantly, I think the genesis of this request was whether or not the council has authority to direct this integration. I brought in Attorney Langle into this conversation. He drafted a letter, which was part of the packet. I just want to hit a couple highlights from that letter. This is, this is a direct quote from the letter. Given that the council controls the terms and conditions of employment for all city employees, including those working at BPU, the council has authority to direct the city administrator to integrate IT citywide for organizational and efficiency purposes. The IT personnel at BPU must continue to fulfill the operational needs of the utilities as determined by the commission, just as the IT personnel at City Hall must continue to fulfill the operational needs of the various departments in the rest of the city, for example, police, fire, and finance. Having varying duties for the various IT consumers throughout the city does not prevent the city from integrating the two IT departments organizationally. So the letter's in there. Attorney Langle's here to answer questions if you have them. I'm also asking for staff, or excuse me, for council to direct staff to form an integration work group consisting of Council President Bevins, Public Utilities Chair Matten, City Administrator Broyles, and Public Utilities Director Evans to oversee the integration process.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Mr. Chesak? I think I have a question for our attorney.
Yep, he's here.
Yes. Mr. Langle, when we give direction to staff, that's a formal process, is it not?
Member Chesak, council, I'm not sure what you mean by formal process.
It's a public process, correct?
It's, the direction is public. What is carried out, the information that might be obtained or utilized during that process is not necessarily public, depending upon whether it's personnel data or what have you.
Right. So in order to give direction, do we have to vote on it?
Not necessarily. Councils often give direction by consensus, depending upon the circumstances of the conversation. Like when we have workshops and so forth, where there are no formal votes, you can give direction by consensus, but that's kind of up to the councils.
Isn't that a rules of decorum that in order to direct staff, we have to do it through, via motion and second and vote?
You certainly can do it that way, yes.
Yeah, it does. It's not an interpretation. That's what it says. I don't recall we ever voted on this, Mr. Bevins.
We haven't yet.
No, it says right there. It says right there, we were directing him to do that. When did we vote on that?
Oh, I, I don't, I. Chairman Johnson believes he can answer that part. When we gave direction to merge the ITs? Is that what you're asking?
He, Mr. Broyles read a memo just now. He said he was directed by council to integrate. When did we direct him to do that?
I think Mr. Johnson could answer that. Mr. Johnson, I can't.
I can answer that question, yeah. As part of Mr. Broyles' contract of employment, we agreed to conduct a six-month job performance evaluation, at which we did conduct the evaluation. We talked about goals moving forward, two of which were integrate IT and finance. Chris Hubert and myself put together a recap of the review and the direction moving forward, and it was placed on the consent calendar of the next council meeting. That consent agenda was voted on and passed unanimously by the Brainerd City Council.
Yes, I remember that.
So where, didn't we give that direction?
I just wanted to point that out. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chesak, you have the floor.
I'm good.
You're good? No other questions of staff? Okay, any other questions of staff? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, one question. If we're appointing Council President Bevins and Public Utilities Chair Matten in October, November, do Bevins and Matten stay on the integration committee, or do those chairs, the council president and the public utility chair?
Nick?
What are you thinking, Nick?
Position or a person?
Position, would be my opinion.
Okay.
I think that makes sense. Yeah.
So the positions are public utilities chair and council president chair if, if it goes into 2025, and those positions change. Good, good question. Any further discussion? Or, I'm sorry, not discussion, questions of staff? Okay, so we're gonna look for a motion, and the motion is to appoint this integration work group, and by positions, it, not names. I'll ask a second. Yes, Mr. Chesak?
Being that you mentioned something about interviews, and if other people want to
Being that you mentioned something about interviews and if other people want to get involved, you wouldn't have any problem with that. Would you have any problem with other council members sitting in on this, as long as there's not a quorum of a committee involved?
I can't answer that. I'm not asking for the committee. Mr. Broyles?
The decision is ultimately up to the council. My interest would be to have a relatively small group. We'll be bouncing off a lot of ideas, war gaming potentially, a lot of strategies that might not ever come to fruition. So I just want to have a smaller group that's a little more agile. But it's certainly up to the council who they want to have on the work group.
I, I don't know if I can give you any more answer than that.
Well, I appreciate what you said about getting involved and wanting to be involved, and I take that to heart. And, yeah, I wouldn't mind being part of this. You know, is there any objection to that? Are we just limited to the council president and the public utilities chair? I mean, we talked about it just earlier.
I can't, I can't answer that I would.
You, you would what?
Have any objection.
Well, I'd move that we allow other members, and I'd so, I.
Let's, let's, let's see. Do we have a motion on this, Tony?
We don't have any motions on this.
I have a suggestion.
Well, wait, Jeff asked to have a motion, and we have no motions on the floor. So I think he has the floor.
Oh.
Okay, I would just make a motion that I'd volunteer to be on this committee as well as President Bevins. Think we work good together.
Thank you. That's, that's a motion?
Yeah.
But we have no, okay.
We already have a committee yet.
We already discussed, we don't have a committee yet, and the, and the people on this committee are not by name. So you're asking to be on this by name, which is kind of odd.
I'm trying to make this easy.
But you have made a motion. So we'll look for a second on that Jeff Chesak gets to be the only person named to this, to this committee. And I'll ask a second time if there's a second. And I'll ask a third and final time if there's a second. And the motion dies for a second. Mr. Chesak has the floor, then Mr. O'Day, then Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I just, you know, on one hand, we're talking about being involved, and we, we talk about interviews and people wanting to maybe find out more information, and this seems to be cloaked with a little secrecy here, and that's why I wanted to be part of it. I'm sorry, that's the way it looks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Day?
I would suggest we add liaison to public utilities, council liaison to the list on this group. That's all.
Okay.
Want to make that as a motion?
Yeah, make that as a motion, and let's just do that.
Yeah, remove all the names from the recommendation, just positions, and add public utilities.
Liaison.
Liaison.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Stingline, to get the names out of there, as Mr. Chairman Johnson said, just have positions, and add a position of the public utilities liaison. Any questions or comments? Chairman Johnson?
Thank you. I, I question it. I'll support the motion, and I'm happy that Jeff wants to be involved. And as the liaison, he's got a good understanding of both organizations. But it does tip the balance into three city hall people versus two public utilities people, and that could end up being a problem. So we may have this coming back, adding yet another member, but I support the motion. I'm fine with it.
Thank you. I don't think it would, only because this is just a work group. Every, anything this work group decides, I'll have to come back here anyway. You know what I mean? It's a, it's a work group.
Mr. Bevins? Mr. Chesak?
I'm not offended at all by what you said, Gabe, but I just like a clarification. I don't consider myself a city hall person. I'm a person of the people, so that's who elect to me.
Oh, Kelly.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So the motion by O'Day, second by Stingline, is to add, to remove the names and add the public utilities liaison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So we've added a person to a work group that we don't have yet. We're getting there. So Chairman Johnson?
I would move.
Wait, wait, wait. No, no. O'Day, are you done?
I was done quite a while ago.
All right, Johnson.
I would create the work group.
Second.
With those five.
All right, we got a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline, that we create the work group with no names, just positions, unbalanced as it is. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Okay. Uh, where are we now? Next up is an update on the information requested on the Brainerd Lakes Regional Airport, and this is Connie Hillman and Nick Broyles.
I'll take that, Mr. President.
Anybody who, either one of you like to add or clarify or discuss what's in the packet?
I just will, I'll hit a couple of highlights, if I may, Mr. President. On October 7th, council asked staff for three items, and I won't read those to you, more information on our relationship with Brainerd Lakes Regional Airport. Just to kind of summarize, the first item was approximate time and expenditures on what city departments are contributing in support of the Brainerd Lakes Regional Airport. This is the one that's still outstanding. We're still trying to collect some data. Some of these numbers are going to be a little bit more difficult to estimate because some tasks are just kind of peanut butter spread across the whole organization, you know, for software updates or things of that nature. So we're still working on number one to try to get more information. We'll come back to council with those. Number two, they asked for, council asked the staff for council minutes where direction was given for staff to perform HR services. There are no council minutes where direction was given to staff to perform HR services for the airport. HR did, used to be under finance, and since providing finance services as part of the airport ordinance, HR services are also to be provided for the airport employees, such as onboarding, open enrollment, and payroll. And then the third item was a copy of the IT shared services agreement with some associated dollar amounts and hours, and that is included in the packet. And I can try to answer your questions. Connie may help me if I can't, but any questions from council?
Yeah, any questions? This is purely informational. There's no recommended motions from staff.
I have a question.
Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, Nick, I appreciate you getting back to me right away with my email. I hope everybody saw that. The one thing I would argue is where it said, the council, this ordinance was drafted where it included finance as being the city's responsibility, and that was in 1946, and there wasn't even HR in 1946. That was brought along into the city as a position, or I believe in '07 when Chris Schubert was hired. And so whatever that position was put under does not, in my opinion, automatically make that now a responsibility to the airport ordinance when it comes under finance. That was added in after the fact. So i-if, if it was thought that you have an ordinance from 1946, says, okay, city's responsibility is finance, and now we move along through the years, and somehow finance undertakes the role of HR, and now we have a separate HR department, I would just argue that they're not combined now. And if you can somehow clarify that for me, where I may be incorrect in my thinking, I'd, I'd appreciate that.
No, I agree. HR and finance are separate now. So if HR was under finance at some point in the past, they're now separate. And to your point, we do not have any council minutes that direct staff to provide HR services to the airport.
Okay, so then to my point on that is, we are, we are paying a cost that was nowhere ever agreed upon in this ordinance between the city and the county. And that's just, the reason we're bringing this forward is to show the public the money that is being spent by staff time for the airport based on the money, or we pay our employees for the hourly work. And I, and I assume that that'll be coming back from HR, even though we may have a difference of opinion on why it's in there to begin with or not. But can we look forward to that? Then I think that is in the works, right? The hours that HR spends?
Yes, we'll work on.
Okay, thank you.
Gain that information.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Bevins.
No problem. Any other questions of staff on their update on the airport? Comments? I'm sorry, what was that, Kara?
No, Connie. Connie had raised her hand, but no, I guess she doesn't have anything to add.
I don't know if it's a twitch or she has something to say, but I look at her, and then she lies behind her computer. Connie, anything you'd like to add? Any other comments? Questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Broyles. We will move on to item eight, new business. Item 8A is adopting a resolution, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, series 2024A, in the proposed amount of $3,370,000. Connie, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
I would actually like to turn it over to our finance advisor, Ms. Chris Hogan, who should be online with us with Baker Tilly.
All right, Chris, are you with us? There you are.
I am. Did you hear me?
Yep, we hear you just perfect. Tell us, tell us what we need to know.
I will do that. Thank you, Mayor, council member, council president, and council members. My name's Chris Hogan. I'm here from Baker Tilly, serving the city as the municipal advisor. Here tonight to provide some information in regards to the city's proposed issuance and sale of their city's general obligation bond, series 2024A, in the proposed principal amount of $3,370,000, and to answer any questions. To start, to give you a background on what the proposed issuance is for, it's for two purposes. $2,030,000 are for improvement bonds. Those are for accessible public improvements. Those are related to, give me a second here, the North Brainerd Reconstruction Project. And then there is, the other purpose is for $1,340,000 utility revenue bonds, and that's to finance the water-related improvements to the North Brainerd Reconstruction Project. Just to step through a sale process. So tonight, the council is considering the resolution of the terms and the sale of the bonds. We will then go to, do a rating process. We'll go through a rating process. The city's current general obligation rating is double A minus. We have a meeting scheduled with S&amp;P, finance director, BPU finance manager, and Baker Tilly. We have that scheduled for October 29. And then we have the sale scheduled for November 18 at 10 o'clock. And then we will get the bids that day, and the council will consider the words of the bonds that evening to the winning bidder. Just a couple, I just want to make a couple of notes on the current market environment. We measure the tax exempt market based on the bond buyer index. Just looking over the last, right now where we are today, mid-October, is about the lowest we have been in market rates since early summer. And they have come down since then. Actually, we haven't been at this level back in March of this year. As probably most of you know, the Fed had cut interest rates in September by a half percent, and there's expectations that there'll be additional interest rate cuts yet this year of a half to a three-quarter percent. So the bonders set up to be repaid over a term of 10 years. The local portion is going to be paid with special assessments and tax levies, general tax levies. The BPU water portion is also structured for a rebate payment term of 10 years, and that's to be paid with the water utility revenue bonds, or water utility revenues. And with that, I guess I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions of our bond advisor on the tonight's resolution? None? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't go away yet, just in case something comes up. So we're looking for a motion to adopt the attached resolution, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, series 2024, in the proposed aggregate principal amount of $3,370,000. Anybody care to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion by O'Day. Is there a second? Second by Chesak? Any discussion on the motion? Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, I have a question about the $2,030,000 improvement bonds.
Sure.
Where does that match up with what we had in our capital improvement plan for that project? What were we expecting to bond, and what did we end up taking on debt for this project?
Okay, I'm gonna have to defer Connie on that.
No, we got that.
I want to say we were thinking we'd have to issue about almost $2 million, if I remember correctly.
Okay, this is over $2 million, so.
Well, we also have to pay for the cost of issuance as well, because we don't have the funds to fund that. But then the project's cost came in differently as well. So I think we were planning on issuing the $2 million and then paying it back with special assessments. I mean, our levy amount was lower than we had predicted, because it wasn't for the whole $2 million.
The debt levy was to the benefit of the taxpayers based on what we had projected?
Repeat that.
What ended up going on to the debt levy is better for the taxpayers than what we initially projected?
No.
It's worse.
We, they, we scheduled it this year, so what we had in the preliminary levy was what we structured it for, but it could have been a little bit higher than what was in our preliminary levy, yes.
Chairman Johnson?
I guess those are English words.
And I might note that the bonding amount for that project, the project amount is $1,962,846. Like Connie said, the borrowing estimate now is $2,030,000, but that includes cost of issuing the bonds.
Chairman Johnson, anything else?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the, on the, on the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chesak?
Just so I'm clear, are we talking about our levy being affected by this in the sense that we may not have as much, call it the surplus that we preliminary levied for than what we were expecting?
I would say no, but I'll defer to Connie Hillman.
When we did the preliminary levy, I do believe we were having $167,000 for, to pay off these bonds. When, the way it was structured, we structured it so that is the amount that we have to pay for the 2025 levy amount. If we hadn't had that amount, we probably would have had a little bit higher. It would have been like $175,000 or something like that, if memory serves me correctly.
Can I answer your question, Jeff?
I'm really not sure. I understand what you just said. So my question is, again, just so I make sure. What we, our levy is preliminary set, and is this going to affect? Because we did levy higher just in case we didn't, had some questions left over. Is that going to affect the dollar amount that we had above what we set it for with the, let's see if I get this straight. So if you recall our levy discussion, Gabe had indicated he's adding more to that of about $130-some thousand. And, and that, I think, directly affected what the airport levy was, as he indicated. And now, we've added a little bit tonight with the, the higher, I do believe, of the specialist administrative specialist position, that's a couple thousand bucks, I believe. Does that all affects our preliminary levy, does it not? And then, does this particular cost of this change that dollar amount we had in the quote-unquote surplus in that preliminary levy amount? Is that?
This action does not, because this was what was in our preliminary debt levy.
Okay, that's, I, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, so we've got a motion, we've got a second to adopt the attached resolution. Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Chesak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Next, next up is item eight, new business B, authorize the submission of a small cities development grant preliminary proposal to the Department of Employment and Economic Development. This would be Connie Hillman, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to John Schumer with the Brainerd HRA.
John, please come on up to the microphone. You do have to give your name and at least the address of the HRA or somewhere.
Thank you, President Bevins. John Schumer, 324 East River Road, Brainerd HRA. Again, thank you, President Bevins, members of the council. To submit for the deed Small Cities Development Program Grant, we are required to have the city approve submission of that because this grant is applied for on behalf of the city. So the grant becomes the city of Brainerd's grant. So in order to do that, the preliminary proposal is due November 27. This grant is going to request funds from the Department of Employment and Economic Development to rehab owner-occupied homes. Low-income families can apply for these grant dollars to make health and safety repairs and other items like that. Part of this grant submission will also be to ask for dollars for commercial rehab to coincide with the reconstruction of Highway 210 throughout the city of Brainerd. We are also looking at doing some rental rehab as part of it. To determine if we would be eligible to receive this, we have to prove that we have interests. So we have been sending out letters to the, and there's a map of the target area included in the packet. We've been sending out letters and started to get responses. It's important to know, to, deed wants to know that these funds will be utilized. So it's part of the process, and again, we're just asking for the council to approve submission of this grant on behalf of the city.
Perfect. Before you go, any questions of John? Any questions of John? Mr. Mayor?
So I actually happen to live within the target area there, so I did receive the survey. And I was looking for in the packet, I didn't see it in there, but on the survey, there's actually specific dollar amounts. And you spoke to the low-income aspect of it. Who sets that dollar amount? Is that set by the state, or is that?
HUD determines that.
Oh, I'm sorry, was it?
HUD, Housing and Urban Development, Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Perfect, that was my only question.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chesak?
What's the dollar amount you're looking for here?
We will request, we can request up to $600,000 for the rehab of housing and $600,000 for street scape. So it could be a total of 1.2 million that we request.
No local match?
We, it's competitive based off, and if there's local dollars matched, there's funds that have come in from previous small cities grants that the city has. It's called local income, and we plan on utilizing those funds as leverage. We partner with TCC and weatherization for the homes. There's a value placed on that service. We can count that as leverage funds. Anytime that the HRA staff puts into it, we can count as leverage funds as well. So yes, to answer your question, there is leverage dollars that go into this. But there are several sources for those funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chesak. Any further questions of staff? Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to authorize the Brainerd HRA to submit to a small cities development program for 2025 preliminary proposal to the Department of Economic, or Employment and Economic Development to coincide with the Washington Street construction.
So moved.
Motion by Chesak, second by Stingline. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is the resolution regarding the 2023-2024 nuisance abatement and 2023-2024 downtown special services district assessments. Mr. Dean Orr and/or Mr. Kramvik, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Attached to the proposed assessment rules for the 2023 to 2024 nuisance abatements in downtown special services district, staff is recommending to first hold the public hearing. Staff can assist with questions during the hearing. However, following the public hearing, staff is recommending adoption of the resolution that adopts the assessments to begin the 30-day payment clock. If there are any contested assessments, staff would return with those assessments at the next meeting for discussion, unless council wishes to adopt the contested assessments without further consultation. And James has more to add on to this.
James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and council. Just want to make you aware, we did have three people, I believe, last week that turned in contested assessments, so there'll be three of them that staff will bring to the next meeting with more information for city council.
Okay. And before we open the public hearing, just a procedural thing that you clarified with me, James, is that staff normally request that we adopt the resolution with the entire assessment rule, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
It's easier to come back and remove if council in two weeks decides that they wish to, to change an assessment or remove an assessment. Does that, does anybody have any questions on the, on the staff? Does that, does anybody have any questions on the, on the staff recommendation on adopting the entire assessment rule? This is what we've normally done, and I want to make sure you all understand. And anybody who's here to speak on the assessments, that would, that would hold for you as well, is that generally what we do, and we may not do it tonight, who knows what we're going to do tonight, but in the past, we have adopted all the assessments and then we, then we pull you off one by one in two weeks, if council desires. So the first order of business is we're going to hold a public hearing to hear testimony for or against the proposed assessments. So if you've got an assessment and you're questioning it or wanted the council to hear what you have to say, it is 8:41, I will open the public hearing, come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and let us know what is important to you. Now's the time. Come on up. There's three letters we got, and they'll automatically be looked at. So you might be one of those three or not. So I ask a second time, if you're here on an assessment letter that you received and wish to contest it or discuss it or question it in any way, now's your time to do it. And I will ask a third and final time, if you're here, to testify on your proposed assessment for either the nuisance abatement or the downtown special services district, now is your time to come forward. And I will close the public hearing at 8:42 and look for a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by O'Day?
Second.
Second by Stingline. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Chazak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up is item eight, new business. Eight D is adopting a resolution, adopting an assessment for improvement 2208, the South Brainerd Reconstruction Project. This is Mr. Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. So attached are the proposed assessment rules for improvement 2208, the South Brainerd Reconstruction Project. So same as the last one, staff is recommending holding the public hearing, followed by adoption of the attached resolution, adopting the assessments. We have also included information in the packet regarding criteria for deferred assessments and would direct anyone requesting deferment to fill out the appropriate application with staff here at City Hall during our business hours. Complete ineligible deferment applications would be presented at a future council meeting for consideration.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Okay, it is 8:43, and I'll open the public hearing to hear testimony for or against the proposed assessments on improvement 2208, which is the South Brainerd Reconstruction Project. Again, if you're here to testify on that project or that project's assessments, please state your name and address when you come to the microphone. I will ask a second time, if you're here to come forward to the South Brainerd Reconstruction Project, now's your time. Come on up. State your name and address and tell me what you think of these assessments.
Too much.
And your name and address?
John Stubbs, 823 South Sixth Street.
Thank you, John. What do you think?
I have to say, first of all, they did a great job.
Thank you.
You know, they were very polite, very courteous, very informative, let me know when I could get in my driveway and out. So I do appreciate that. So my big question, it's assessment of 65, 76 per foot. Is that the same assessment everybody got per foot?
I believe so, but let's, yes. Our engineer, Jesse Dean, has nodded his head, everybody got.
So it's all the same, okay. And assessable footage, did they measure it or?
You know, I don't, yeah, they actually go out and measure it.
It is based on the planted footage of your frontage. So certain homes only have one set of frontage. Your home actually has two, so you have a corner lot. You have the full frontage on one side, and then you also have the side yard deduction, which is only half of the frontage on the other side, which is per the policy, which is on the side yard, you are only assessed for half of that frontage.
So I'm assessed half of it on Rosewood itself? Because Sixth Street was already done.
Looking, correct, you're not on the sixth side. It would be of the two, hang on a second here. Of the two, you have 150 on the one side. Or no, it would have been the 75 feet, so it would have been 150 divided by the two, so only a 75 times the assessment rate.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify. And I'm more inclined to pay it off because I don't want to pay 5% interest over 10 years, et cetera, et cetera. You know, that adds another 3,000 in costs. They shouldn't be making money off of us.
All right, anything else?
No, that was my main point, you know. And why are they charging 4.9? That seems awful high for other people when they're getting assessed on their property tax.
I think they're assessing, you talking about the interest rate?
Yeah.
I think our general, our policy is 2%, is it, or?
1.5%.
1.5% over what we can borrow.
Above what we pay, of what we think we're going to get when we issue those bonds.
And that's been for 22 years since I've been on the council.
Okay, I just wondered, because to me, that's more than I'm getting off my CDs, you know.
Right.
You know, so that seemed a little excessive, you know, for, because you guys are making money off of it.
Understood.
You know, so that was my.
It's an incentive to pay it off.
Right, I guess. But anyhow, I just thought that seemed high. That's my only point on that.
Thank you.
And thank you for the information.
Thank you, thanks for coming forward. All right, it's 8:47, we're in the public hearing on improvement 2208. If you've got something you'd like to let the council know about your assessment, please come forward. And I will ask a final time, and I will close the public hearing on testimony for or against the proposed assessments and look for the council to make a motion to adopt the attached resolution, adopting the assessments as proposed for improvement 2208, South Brainerd Reconstruction Project.
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion? Here are Terry.
Mr. President, I'll abstain from this motion because I live in this area.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunick?
Yes.
Terry?
Sting.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chazak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. We will move on to item eight, new business E, considering the $1 per acre incentive program and parameters. Mr. Kramvik, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So Swanson Hazcap Consulting prepared a memo with the parameters of a potential land sale incentive program and presented it at the October 3rd EDA meeting for city-owned property. The purchaser must submit a development plan that includes a detailed site plan, building/architectural concept plans with estimated cost, job and employment plan, and a $10,000 application fee. The EDA did not recommend setting a number of jobs that must be created and would like to review it on a case-by-case basis. Part of this had to do with, land has different sizes, so they didn't want to set a particular number. So with that, the EDA unanimously recommended approval of the $1 per acre land credit program as presented by SHC at their meeting. This is very similar to what the city council had approved, I believe, about five years ago.
Any questions of staff on the $1 per acre program?
Yes.
Mr. Chesek? Did we sell any of those five years ago through that time?
We have not, you know, one of the, one of the issues is we didn't have it listed with a realtor as well. So that's something that we do currently have.
Katie barred the door.
There'll be a line. See Jeff Chesek? Any further questions of staff? Okay, hearing none, we're looking for a motion to either approve or deny the $1 per acre land credit program as presented by SHC.
So moved.
Motion by Chesek, is there a second? Second by O'Day, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item F is consider a conditional use permit for propane fuel storage tank facility at 2602 South 11th Street for the Superior Fuel Company. Mr. Kramvik, what would you like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So Superior Fuel has applied for a CUP at 2602 South 11th Street to utilize for bulk storage of propane. The Planning Commission reviewed this application earlier tonight at a special meeting and conducted the public hearing. The proposed storage area for small residential propane tanks that are unfilled will be screened by a chain-link fence with slats. There will be no impacts to the entrance/traffic flow as a result of the change of use of the property. The previous use of the property was a construction company. The proposed location was reviewed by the fire department and meets all setbacks. The proposed bulk fuel storage facility is harmonious with the adjacent residential properties as there is another bulk storage facility even larger to the south. No one spoke at the public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting, and no additional comments were provided by the Planning Commission. They did unanimously recommend approval. So with that, the recommendation is to approve the CUP with the following conditions. A final inspection by the fire marshal and building official are to be conducted prior to operation of the facility, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on the propane storage tank? Okay, hearing none, we're looking for a motion to either approve or deny the conditional use permit for 2602 11th Street Southeast with the condition that the fire marshal and building official is to be conducted prior to the operation of the facility.
So moved.
We have a motion by Stunick, a second by Stingline. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Happy fueling. Next up is item eight, new business G, adopting a resolution, receiving the feasibility report and calling for the public hearing on improvement 23-13 Trunk Highway 371B Willow Street Roundabout Project. Mr. Dean, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? The only question I have is the same one I asked six months ago. How much more is this costing us than if we had done it when we wanted to two years ago?
Much.
Do we have a number on that yet? Same question I asked six months ago. Many moons ago.
It'd be very, very difficult for us to figure that out because we don't know what the construction cost would have been two years ago for the project. However, with the grant here now, it is highly likely that it would have been less now with this grant in place. And then we're also including a block of reconstruction that likely would not have been part of the scope of the previous project.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions of staff? Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, I really would like an answer to that question, and I think you could figure it out because it's all quantities and materials that we bid out on every project. So you can see what we were paying for projects when the Sixth Street was reconstructed and what the quantities and materials are for this project and make a pretty fair comparison.
Me too, thank you.
So I would like to see that.
Is that a motion?
I saw a move.
Sorry, Mr. Bevins.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? This motion is just to compare the cost difference in the, from when we originally did South Sixth Street, correct? Mr. O'Day?
I'm going to vote no. This is a waste of staff's time because we can all do the research ourselves and find that out. I don't want to put this on our staff.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Mr. Chesek?
It is kind of an effort in futility because all we're going to do is find out there's a difference or not, and then what do we do with it? We complain that we maybe spent too much or we saved money? It's kind of, I agree with Mr. O'Day. I like to know these things, but to what end? What do we accomplish?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Thank you. I would vote in favor, but I think we accomplish having data. Next time we ask MINDOT for something in a MINDOT project and they say no, we can say, here is the data of what you cost Brainerd taxpayers last time you said no to something we knew we needed in this community, and you said, no, you don't need it. So there is value to have something on the shelf to show MINDOT next time when we get into a disagreement on Washington Street in two years. So I think there is some value. I see that it is a bit of a futile waste of staff time, but I think there's value there.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, if you vote in favor, you vote in favor of directing staff to let us know how much additional this costs us or we save money by waiting till now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Sounds like the motion carried. Anybody disagree? Okay. Back to the original item on the feasibility report, calling for the public hearing. Any other questions of staff? Then we will look for a motion to either adopt or reject the attached resolution on the feasibility report and setting the public hearing for improvement 23-13 Trunk Highway 371 Willow Street Roundabout on November 18th, 2024 at 7:30. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, any discussion? Mr. Mayor?
I'm just going to voice my distaste for this project once again, as I will do every time it comes up, because when this road gets closed down again, again, for the people that are living down that area, I want them to know that we wanted this to get done when we did the road the first time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
O'Day? Stunick?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
Chazak?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Item nine is public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We usually ask you to keep it to three to five minutes, and it's 8:57, and I open the public hearing. If you've got something to say that's not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind if it's not something we've discussed this evening. If you're online on your computer, you can hit star three, and that'll let us know that you wish to speak. And then when it's your turn, star six will unmute you. I will ask a second time, if there's anybody online or in chambers that wishes to speak, now's your chance. And I will ask a third and final time, anybody in chambers or online who wishes to speak to the council? Now's your chance. And I will close the public forum at 8:58. Next up is staff reports. We'll start to my right. Officer Rundy, anything for the police department?
Thank you. We have our annual Halloween safety event coming up on Halloween, 3:30 to 6:00 PM at the police department. And nothing further to report after that.
Okay, is there any age limits?
No.
All right, so Gabe and I are in.
Come on, come on.
Sean, anything from ITGIS?
Nothing tonight.
Connie Hillman, any, finance director, anything from the finance department?
Just the election, of course, is November 5th. We did public testing today, and we are ready to go.
Okay, so I don't forget, Eric Sharpentier, online from the Brainerd HRA.
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Jesse Dean, our city engineer, public works director.
Skolvikes.
What?
Sounds like, maybe, sounds like maybe you've either switched to nonfilters or were screaming at your TV, one of the two. James Kramvik, community development director.
Thank you, Mr. President, just one item. Just wanted to make council aware, the staff has reached out to Just for Crypto and is setting up a tour of the facility for the EDA. It'd be the first week of November, once a date is scheduled. City council, as well as the BPU commission, will also be invited to attend.
Thank you. Mr. Langel, anything from the attorney's office?
Nothing here, thank you.
Chris Schubert from the HR department? Mr. Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing to add.
Oh, that is a shame. And Mr. Broyles from the administrative department?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one thing, my wife and I had the opportunity to go to our first Great Pumpkin Festival last weekend, had a great time. Just want to thank all the vendors that attended and set up activities for the kids. I want to call out a few Pope folks and the city employees, from the parks department. We had, or excuse me, from our community development department, James, Stephanie, and Brenda helped out considerably. Obviously, the parks department as a whole for hosting it, Sean from Streets, and also Mayor Bedeau. So it was a great event, and it was a lot of fun for my wife and I.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Wonderful. Now, first of all, I know we're not supposed to address them or make any direction towards them. towards them, and I know at home you can't see it, but I just want to point out, the Al Borland news table we have back here today. Just a couple gentlemen in flannel with some good beards back there, so just want to say thank you. That's the last we'll mention it. Want to echo Minister Broyles' comments on the Great Pumpkin Festival, another fantastic event. Want to thank everyone involved with that. It really went really well, and it's just great to have events like that in the city of Brainerd for our kids to do that are free of charge. Speaking of which, Downtown Spooktacular happening this Saturday, the 26th, Downtown Brainerd, Minnesota. You can bring your kids in costume, come down, get some free candy. All the stores down here will be operating. I know you're, you're asking me what time it is, and that's a great question. I didn't write it down, and there's no way I know. I believe it's 1 o'clock, but it could be 2, could be 3, could be midnight, I don't know. But it's this Saturday, Downtown Brainerd, Minnesota. Check it out online. And then lastly, the Brainerd JCs partnering again with organizations around the area to bring back the distinguished service awards. So that is happening right now. Nominations for that are being taken online. You can look that up through the JCs or through the various different organizations. But the distinguished service awards banquet will be happening at the beginning, or middle, excuse me, middle of November as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to council committee reports. Let's start with our two chairs. Mr. O'Day, you're first.
Nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing to add.
Tiffany Stingline?